Okay, we are ready. So, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is six o'clock. We'll start out with the roll call.
I will start with Mayor Bruin on the phone.
Here.
Mr. Heyman.
Present.
Mr. Rajarothnum.
Present.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
We have four present and only four seated, so we do have a quorum.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda.
So, Mo.
Second.
Okay, we have an approval of the, uh, motion of approval.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Rajarothnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation, so if everybody will please stand and follow me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand for a moment of silence and personal prayer.
So next, we have a presentation tonight, and Councilmember Rajarothnum is going to be presenting that.
The proclamation of the city of Ridgecrest, California, safely surrendered baby awareness month, whereas the safely surrendered baby law was created in 2001 with the intent to save the lives of newborn infants at risk of abandonment by encouraging parents or persons with lawful custody to safely surrender the infant within seventy-two hours of birth with no questions asked, and whereas, since the safety, safely surrendered baby laws inception, there have been eighty-four babies safely surrendered in Kern County and placed in loving homes, and whereas, in Ridgecrest and throughout Kern County, a newborn baby can be safely surrendered into the hands of any hospital emergency room or fire station, and whereas, the safely surrendered baby coalition, under the coordination of Departments of Human Services, works to educate Kern County residents about this important law. The coalition is made up of a small group of dedicated individuals representing a long list of agencies, nonprofits, hospitals, and stakeholders, including first five Kern, Bakersfield City Fire Department, the Kern County Fire Department, Kern Medical, Dignity Health's Mercy and Memorial Hospitals, Adventist Health and Clinica Sierra Vista, to name a few. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Ridgecrest, thus hereby proclaim the month of February as safely surrendered baby awareness month, and encourages all Ridgecrest citizens to re- reach out and assist the safely surrendered baby coalition with their endeavors. Proclaimed February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, signed Eric E. Bryan, Mayor, Earl Scott Heyman, Mayor Proterm, Solomon Rajarothnum, Vice Mayor, Kyle Blades, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Rajarothnum. Councilmember Blades?
No, he actually mentioned everything there was to mention, so, good to go.
Okay, very good. Okay, next, we will move on to public comments of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. So at this time, we were open to public comment on items not on the agenda. Okay, seeing that we have no public comment, we will, uh, move on to council announcements.
None here.
Just want to mention that, um, I W E Economic Outdo Conference is on the twenty-fifth. It's virtual. Um, it is free, so you just need to call the chamber to get the login information.
Very good. Mayor Bruin?
I have no comments right now.
Okay. All right, so next, we're going to move to the, uh, council calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I will now read each one. Proposed action to approve draft minutes of the regular meeting dated February third, twenty twenty-one. That is our only one. Do any members of the council wish to have an item pulled? Mayor Bruin?
I'm good.
Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Okay, seeing none. Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, motion we approve.
Second.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Rajarothnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to agenda item three, discussion and action items, uh, planning commissioner appointment. That will be presented by... Ms. Sharlin.
When Mr. Mauer left, resigned the last meeting, it left a council member, or a planning commission seat open, which became Mr. Rajarothnum's appointment to make tonight, so if you have a nomination, the floor is yours.
Is that why it is, or is it because, uh, Mr. ... It's the other council member, isn't it?
Mauer? No.
Planning Commissioner.
Uh, Travis Reed?
Travis Reed is resigning, right?
Yes, sir. And he was...
He was mine.
Your appointment, so you're making a new appointment. I stand corrected, yes, Mr. Mauer's appointment will be with the new council member, so you are replacing Mr. Reed. Thank you.
Just wanted to clear that.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
But that connects into that anyway, so, yeah, I'm going to appoint, uh, Mr., um, Warren Cox to the planning commission. I'm going to appoint Mr. Warren Cox for the planning commission.
Is there any council discussion on Mr. Cox, or are we okay with that?
Great choice, Solomon.
We appear to be okay with it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on item number three? We're good?
Good.
All right, so next is item number four, discussion and provide guidance to the city's representative on the board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. That's, uh, presented by myself. So I have, uh, two, um, items I wanted to just, um, go over with everybody that we covered that was on the agenda of the last, um, uh, groundwater authority meeting. So one was the, uh, approval of hiring RGS. It's a regional governmental services, and so what that does, it was approved, um, to hire this, this outfit, and so what it does, it brings an independent general manager onboard, and so, which I feel, I'm really pleased to see, and I think it's going to be a, a really, um, benefit to the, to the groundwater authority, and, um, so it's going to bring on a new general manager. It's also going to bring on a new clerk of the board and admin, uh, person, and it will also, they will, uh, provide account, an, an accounting manager, so, and along with that, accounts receivables, receivables and payable. So some of the issues we had, like with the accounting and finance, I think it's going to be a major benefit in that area, too, to help, uh, keep things, you know, in line, and then coming from an independent source, I think, uh, hopefully it'll satisfy a lot of people's questions as to, you know, the, the finance and, and the account, um, aspect of the, of the, of the board. And so that was a major, um, hurdle and, uh, and benefit to the GA. The second thing was the, uh, that was approved was the shallow well mitigation or project number four. And so basically, that consists of, um, money that has been allotted already, um, toward it that will, uh, one, um, be put toward development of shallow well impacts and identification, um, and the evaluation and, and mitigation plan for shallow well impacts, and will also provide, um, funding toward development of shallow well impact, uh, forms, outreach to shallow well owners, and identification and initial evaluation of water supply impacts as reported by the shallow well owners. So those were the two major agenda items that we went over in the last meeting. So anyone have any questions?
No, no, no questions on anything you discussed. I didn't know if there was anything on the, um, for the next agenda, anything coming up?
We don't have an agenda out yet?
No, I just didn't know if it got brought up for future agenda items, like at the end of your last meeting, that maybe we'd want to talk about.
I don't have anything...
Yeah, the focus right now of, of staff is to onboard the new, uh, general manager. Uh, we had a series of, uh, staff calls today to, uh, get this individual up to speed. There's really nothing of note that's on the next agenda coming up. I, I believe one of the items we have is the change of the groundwater authority's official address that's coming up. Otherwise, we have a staff call next Wednesday to establish the agenda.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Um, GA approved the new monitoring well in southwest region. So what is the purpose of that?
That well's being drilled to provide data for any water, um, and the quality of the water in that area, um, along with that, uh, well, there's a lot of data, information that will come with that, but, uh, water quality, TDSs, um, type of soils, um, the overall water quality and...
Which way the water's moving, how fast.
Yeah.
So it's through a grant program, I believe, right? So it's not an additional expense to a G, to GA?
It's a very small expense to the groundwater authority, but the major cost is through the state.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed you guys presented, uh, at least I think your, was it Steve presented the Prop One, Prop sixty-eight grant status? Uh, in the meantime, well, who, who it was, I'm sorry if I misspoke, um, but it seems like the, I don't know if it's going to be, maybe you could explain that process real quick, just for me. I'm not looking for things to take up our time, but how often is it, just once a year, we can receive those Prop sixty-eight, Prop One grants? Is that something we can keep applying for every year?
It, it's really at the will, the whim of the state and the federal government. I do know that the groundwater authority, uh, during the December meeting, applied for a Prop sixty-eight grant, uh, that involves the city. We've applied, I believe, for, uh, roughly five million dollars in grant funding, uh, four point, if it's awarded, four point seven would go to the city for the finished design of the new wastewater treatment facility and environmental documents, and the part that would go to the groundwater authority would be, um, for the, uh, shallow well mitigation grant.
Right, it just seems like a...
And I know right now, we're, right now, we're doing staff calls on a Prop One funding that's just now becoming available, um, and so we should have a staff call between Stetson, the city, um, representative for our, for our wastewater facility, as well as, uh, Capitol Core, in looking at possibly pursuing that funding in the way of a tertiary component for, uh, recycled water.
Thank you. Does it... Mayor Bruin? Do you have any questions that pertaining to the groundwater?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think that covers, uh, groundwater authority, and so we will move on to...
It's like you, I think you got a phone call, I think, from the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Waiting on you.
Yep, thank you, thank you. So we're going to open up to public comment.
Okay, I think that covers, uh, groundwater authority, and so we will move on to...
I think you, I think you got a phone call, I think, from the public, oh, contact, waiting on you.
Yep. Caller, go ahead.
They're not there. Gary says they're gone. Gary says they're hung up.
So, okay, seeing no other callers, we will, uh, move on to the next item. Item number five, resolution of the City Council of the city of Ridgecrest establishing a fee for accessory dwelling units planning permit. This will be presented by Heather Spurlock.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Heather.
So I am here tonight with the ADU permits. This is to establish a fee. So the municipal code says that city council establishes fees by resolution, so on February the third, city council approved the ordinance to permit accessory dwelling units. This, uh, fee would be to recover the costs associated with the planning department review of accessory dwelling unit applications. Uh, staff has determined the fee should be set at seventy-five dollars. So to give you guys a little bit of background on what the permit planning process would be like, so the applicant would come to planning, and planning would review the ADU size, entrances, setback, parking. Um, with that, some middle will also coordinate with the water district, so they'll have an opportunity to comment. Once it's approved, it will go on to the building department, where they will address it, and they'll do the plan check and inspections. An additional component of the state guidelines required agencies to develop, um, a guide to assist the public with questions that they might have, so this is what was done. And there's a little checklist on here that will provide some basic, easy answers for people that are interested in developing ADUs, and this will be on our website. The last part that I want to talk about is the impact fees. So with the regulation, the state set what kind of impact fees we can collect at the various sizes. So staff did coordinate with the school district, uh, to make sure that the impact fees were correct with what they wanted to do. So at this point, ADUs under five hundred square feet are not subject to, um, school impact fees. Any ADU over five hundred feet is, square feet, is subject to the school impact fees. Any ADU under seven hundred and fifty square feet is not subject to any city impact fees, but if it's over seven hundred and fifty square feet, it will be charged an impact fee, um, that would be proportionate to the primary dwelling unit. Additionally, um, if it's a conversion, so a garage or something that's already there, then there aren't any impact fees. So the resolution tonight is just to set the fee at seventy-five dollars, and staff would ask that you approve that.
Okay, thank you. So we will open up to public comment at this time. On item number eight. Or five, I'm sorry. So item number five, we'll open to public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
He said he doesn't have anything.
I just want to know the rationale for the seventy-five dollars, how we arrived at that.
So the type of review is similar to that of a sign application or a home occupation permit, and those are both similarly priced, so that was the time that we considered would take to process the application.
I want to say I like the guide you put together, so that's very informative. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, I have no further comments, so... We will go ahead and move it for a motion.
Yeah, I'd like a motion to approve.
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Rajarothnum?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, update on council vacancy. That will be presented by Ms. Sharlin.
Yes, sir. Um, at this time, I would like to list the candidates that we received. Um, we received seven applications for the vacant council seat. Um, once I list them, um, I would also like to open up a discussion for the council to talk about the meeting on the twenty-fourth, and just a format, a starting time, all those things that we need to set in place to do that open meeting on the twenty-fourth. So, uh, the seven candidates in alphabetical order are Ms. Peggy Breeden, John P. Skip Gorman, Marshall Chip Holloway, William Jenkins, Alice Jordan, Steve Morgan, and Christian West. All of the applications were forwarded to the council members in an email to review, and the council is free to talk or meet with any of the potential candidates prior to the twenty-fourth. Um, you, you have to get to know them so you know who you're going for, so you're, you're free to do that. So at this time, I just would like to open it up to how you guys want to handle the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, very good. So before I open up to public comment, is, I just want to ask a question, is, is everyone on the council, uh, comfortable with the direction that we're going as discussed in our last meeting, um, as opposed to an election?
Yes, I, I am. I, I want to say yes, and then comma, discuss a few things, so I am comfortable with it. Um, we, we, we sort of breezed over it rather quickly, and I don't think we discussed too much the impacts, just so, and I think it's very important for the public to understand our direction, if that's the direction we're going. So one of those is, we understand, and it's been explained to us legally, there's only two options. One of those options, sorry, I need to quit dancing around and speaking into the microphone. One of those options is a special election, one is an appointment. To my knowledge, the appointment makes the most sense. It gets somebody on the council a little bit quicker. Uh, Rika, could you, a few questions, this will be to you and to Lloyd. When is the next, uh, when would be the next election? It wouldn't be for a while, wouldn't be for a while, right?
Let me go first, Rika, if I may. So the, the rule is the next regularly established election date not less than a hundred fourteen days from when the, when a special election is called. So a hundred fourteen days puts us, we're now in February, so that puts us well past any April election date. So go ahead then, Rika, you can take it from here.
So the, the next general election isn't until twenty twenty-two, um, and obviously, we don't want to hold off that long, unless you all feel you want to call a special election, and then there's costs involved.
And that was going to be my next question, what is, what would be the cost of a special election?
So it's based off of your registered voters and city limits. Um, we have approximately fifteen thousand registered voters in Kern County, and it would be, uh, five dollars per registered voter. So we're looking at if everybody voted approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. And one thing to add to that is because it would be a special election, a standalone election, we would probably uncover more costs than that, just because we're not adding on to an election already going on with Kern County. There's additional stuff that would be involved.
Gotcha. So we either appoint somebody or spend about a hundred K on a special election? Check, that's, so, yes, I'm comfortable with us doing the appointment process.
So what op, what other options do we have? I mean, suppose if we don't fill the vacancy, what will happen? I know one thing is county can come and fill up the vacancy.
I am not familiar with that part. Uh, Lloyd, are you familiar with that?
Uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I've heard that well, but, uh, I, I think, uh, it was about, um, what, what happens if the council does nothing?
Does nothing, does not fill up the vacancy at this point.
Okay, so the, it is a, a statutory requirement to do one or the other, that is, to either appoint or to call the special election. Um, and the council has sixty days, uh, to make that decision, one way or the other. If the council did nothing, then, uh, someone could file a lawsuit to have a judge require, or let's say, order the city council to do it. So we actually dealt with this in another city where, well, what happens if the vacancy is filled just a day after the sixtieth day? Well, there's, there's not much that a court could do, because the only remedy would be for the court to order the city council to do it, and the council would be doing it right away anyway. So the, I guess that's the downside, or that's the, uh, the ultimate remedy. If the council refused to do it, I think is that the council would be open to a court ordering it to do it.
So it would be a court order, not a county appointed. That's what Mr. Rajarothnum had asked me that I wasn't clear on. It's not something that a county would come in and appoint.
I see. Yeah, no, I think that is, uh, a part of the law for water districts.
Okay.
So no, I do not believe that the county steps in to, uh, appoint someone.
Yeah, I, I necessarily don't like this process, because it's set the whims and fancies of four council members to select a person from the public who is representing the whole community, but if it is the necessary evil, probably I'll go with this, so...
Okay, so seeing that we have the council in, you know, in, in favor, moving forward as things were proposed in the last city council meeting, then, uh, at this point, let's go ahead and open to, uh, public comment, and then after public comment, then we'll hash it out and, and answer and discuss anything that we have pertaining to it, so...
Sounds good, Doc.
So at this time, we'd like to go ahead and open up, uh, open up to public comment on item number six, update on council vacancy. Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, this is Dave Matthews. I think everybody on the council let my email, well, back, uh, about this subject, and I, I don't know what's breaking up here, but, you know, we've got a quick meeting like this. That's what I was trying to say in public comments. It's, I'm, that cut off on. Uh, and if we're not, you're going to be open for some lawsuits, some, that's it. But you let my, uh, let, uh, my email, I hope, because I got replies from everybody, uh, and what I am, suggest, what I had suggested is that we don't need a special election. We just had a le, an election, and all you need to do is just go to that result, the results for the council for that, uh, that last, um, council election, and pick the next runner-up, which was Steve Morgan, and you're done with it.
We're having a major, um, community social issue happening, so you're, we're not...
Is that an us problem or a them problem?
Okay.
Gary, is that us or is that the caller? Hey, Gary, sorry to bother you. I was just saying, is that us or is that the... Is that the caller? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So... Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
I can summarize what Mr. Matthews was wanting to say. I received an email from him, and I did forward it to all of the council. His recommendation was that we go with the next highest vote getter of the last election, which was Mr. Morgan.
Correct.
So, I believe that's what he was wanting to say tonight.
Okay. Do we have any other callers? Okay, seeing no other callers, well, let's go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion and any action, so...
The only thing I was going to chime in, guys, is obviously, you know, this event occurred. I wanted to clarify a couple of points that I wasn't able to in the previous session. First, I was notified by Ms. Charlon of Mr. Mauer's resignation the day after our council meeting in January, and that was why I had the guidelines prepared for the last meeting. I was not trying to expedite anything against the public will, but simply to make it aware of the process and try to follow the same process that we had followed previously. I believe that a general election is folly of taxpayer dollars, which makes it this the best route to solve it. I think next week, having an open session in which we can interview those candidates and discuss with them is the best advice. I stand in favor of moving forward in this direction, and that's about all my comments. I'll let the council discuss.
Okay, very good.
All right. So, what I was going to say is either, I don't know if you, Doc, or if you, Mayor Bruin, want to speak to how that meeting is going to go? If we want to just talk through the mechanics of it, just so people understand what's coming towards them.
So...
Rika probably has the best direction on the meeting itself. It'll be a meeting with one agenda item, which will be to, I believe, to allow each of them to present their comments, and then for the council to debate those candidates and select as we previously had, as the council previously did. In your case, Kyle.
Yes, sir. That is the proposed way of going. I was going to suggest that we go in alphabetical order, just like I did tonight. That way, there's no preferential or draw or anything like that. It's just the easiest way to do it. And last time, nobody was required to get up and speak if they didn't want to. It was all voluntary. You can call their name, and if they have no comments, they can say nothing. If you have questions for them, they can come up and answer. And as long as you guys are okay with that format, we can go that direction.
And so, to start it out, we would just call them off in alphabetical order, let them give a brief history of themselves or introduction, and then questions from the council.
Yeah, I was going to email each of them and let them know the process after you guys discussed it tonight. And I can find out if they would actually like to speak or not. That way, they're not called out, you know, so that you guys are aware who would like to, you know, speak for five or 10 minutes or whatever, and have you guys have discussions with them.
And I believe last time, there were some that did... There were some that did want to speak, and there were a couple that...
Correct.
They were okay with not speaking, so... But I think that worked out just fine last time, and I think it'd be a good way to start it out. So, once they've been introduced and we've fielded any questions that we may have, so then at that point, will we follow the format where we, the council members, individually appoint, or not appoint, but have a candidate that they would like to present or...
Anybody that has a nomination can say that I nominate so-and-so. You can ask for a second. Somebody else could nominate somebody else, and, you know, it's all among you guys how you want to do that. You don't have to appoint that night. The actual agenda item is going to be a swearing-in if so desired. We can have further discussions and put it off until March 3rd, and we can appoint that night if you'd like.
Okay. But we can appoint on this next meeting.
It is going to be an action item if desired, yes.
And so, does council members have any... Any issues to how we go about, you know, appointing or, you know, each individual appointing a person? Do we want to go in a specific order, or do we just want to let it kind of flow?
You know, I don't know. I think we just let it flow.
Okay. That's what we did last time. We did, you know, individuals, you know, council members just spoke out, and then at that point, then we vote on it. And if it's approved, it's approved, and if not, we go to the next. Then, you know, the next council member would then appoint the person that they've chosen, and then we would do the same thing again. We would vote on it, and if approved, good. And if not, then we keep moving through until we come to an agreement. I think that's how it kind of rolls out. So, I think that's pretty straightforward, and it worked reasonably well last time, so... But if anybody has anything they'd like to add to it or see it, you know, formatted a little differently, by all means, bring it up at this point, and we can kind of get our game plan together so that we're, you know, somewhat organized with it.
No, I think things are going to flow. I think they'll flow how they should, and I don't... I'm going to leave that up to, you know... I don't know if we're going to... I think we'll make that decision if we're going to appoint that night, right? But after we've already had the discussion, I don't really know if there's much of a reason for waiting.
No, I mean, personally, I would like to see us, you know, go ahead and handle business and find someone to fill the seat. Sooner the better for the council. We don't gain anything by waiting and sitting on the four-seat council. Rika, do you want to clarify the process a little bit about...
Sure. One thing I do want to state is that if anybody doesn't want to move forward on the 24th, you can bring that up. You can say, "We're not comfortable. Does anybody want to wait?" And if there's a consensus, we can wait. So, that is an option also. We don't have to appoint that night if someone's not comfortable and the majority decide to move it on to the next meeting.
In regards to that, if someone isn't comfortable with it, but the other three council members decide that they are comfortable with it, do we still continue on? Or do we stop because of one council member not wanting to do it?
Correct me, Lloyd. I believe you'd have to have a consensus of the council to move it to the next meeting, correct? If one doesn't want it, they would just abstain or vote no?
I agree. I agree with that, Rika. And can I also clarify that in terms of the language? So, when the council is deliberating, talking amongst yourselves about, "I like this person, I like that person," for whatever reasons, that deliberation is after the public comment is closed. And then, as far as voting on one or the other, the council members should think of that as someone making a motion. So, if it's clear that everyone likes only one person, then it doesn't matter who makes the motion, and the council will vote on that person. If it's not clear, someone at some point will still make a motion, and then you'll find out in the voting whether you're going to move on to another motion.
And when we have a nomination and agreement on the floor, Lloyd, we have to have a majority of three in agreement to move on, correct?
I'm sorry, I'm not following it. To move on to what?
To... For the nomination to be valid, for that to be the appointment. It would have to be a majority of three that agree.
Oh, yes, yes. So, I guess I was confused by the word nomination.
Appointment.
Yeah, I don't even think we need to use the word nomination. There's going to be a motion to appoint, and then there's going to be a vote. And yes, it will require a majority of the council, of the quorum that's at the meeting, to successfully appoint someone.
Okay, further... I just got just one clarification. So, the process would be is that the candidates would be called in alphabetical order. They'd be given an opportunity to make a statement, and then the council could ask questions. What's the council's preference if that candidate wishes not to make a statement? Are... Is the council still going to wish to ask that person questions?
That's what we did last time. They may... The candidate may not wish to come up and say, "I'm so-and-so, and I've lived here all my life, blah, blah, blah." But if the council has questions, they would still come up and answer those questions. They just wouldn't actually state things about themselves prior to.
Okay, thank you.
And so, with that, where would we inject public comment after the introduction of the nominations? Or the applicants?
So, I guess would we do it after each candidate or wait till all of the candidates have been interviewed, and then open it up to public comment?
It should be after all the candidates. I prefer having all the candidates speak.
Lloyd, are you in agreement with after all the candidates speak or individually after each one?
The only consideration that I can think of is that it could be lengthy if you have public comment after each candidate.
So, it's council's preference. So, if they prefer to do it after all the candidates, then that's appropriate, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, then it's council's choice.
It seems the most efficient to let them all introduce themselves and then to have public comment, then our comments. It seems the most efficient.
I agree with that, Mayor Bruin. That's exactly what I was going to suggest, too, so I think that's a good protocol. Everybody agree on that? We'll introduce all seven or however many, open it to public comment, then bring it back to the council. We'll address any questions that we may have for each of the candidates. And then, upon end of that, we will...
Do you think it'd be more efficient to, when the candidate's up there, to ask them questions before we have public comment? In other words, introduction, questions by the council for each one, and then at the end of that, then public comment? Then the council can discuss amongst themselves how they want to proceed or if they have additional questions of the candidates or if they want to discuss or make motions of appointment at that time?
I'm good with that, just because of its efficiency. It kind of flows good. But if, as long as public comment could be properly, you know, put in after that. So, if... And I think we agreed that public comment could come after. Lloyd, do you have any... If we introduce the applicants first, and then if we have questions for them at that time while they're, you know, after they've introduced themselves, and we have questions, could we ask the questions at that time? And then, once we're through with that, then bring public comment in?
That makes sense. I see no problem with that.
I like that. Mayor Bruin, how are you with that?
Sounds fine with me.
Okay. And then, once we're finished with that aspect of it, then we would move right into...
Appointment.
Appointments.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
In view of the importance of this matter, can we open this up to public? In the sense, can they come to the chambers for the next meeting?
So, I have a comment I'd like to maybe ask Rika to comment on that as far as our... There was a info sent out that is to our meeting, but that is in March, right?
Well, Mayor Bruin at the last meeting did announce that when the state lifted its order, we were going to open up 30 days after that. That 30 days is the 24th of February for this meeting. So, the Wednesday 24th meeting will be open to the public. We will still remain taking call-in comments, but the public will be allowed to participate and attend on the 24th. And from that point on, council meetings will be open. Until, unless things change or, you know, something happens further with COVID. But starting the 24th, all meetings will be open to public attendance.
Yeah, it would be nice to give them an opportunity to come and speak here.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, just so we're clear, we're going to have the chambers open to the public on this next meeting?
Yes.
And when's this next special meeting start?
That's my next question. What time would you like to start this meeting? Do you want to keep it at 6:00? Do you want to do 5:00, 5:30? It's up to you guys on when you want to start.
Yeah, we can start a little bit earlier, I think, so probably 5:30.
Okay.
5:30 works with me. Councilman Blades?
5:30, fine.
Mayor Bruin is good at 5:30? Okay. So, everybody's good at 5:30, so we'll set the time for 5:30 on the 24th?
Okay. That's all I had for that item, if you all...
Does any of you council members have any other questions or concerns?
I don't have anything.
Okay, very good. I think we have a format laid out, and...
It's like you got a public comment up there.
So...
I know. I keep mentioning it because I know it's hard to see with the lights, the blue up there, so just mention it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open up to public comment on item six. Caller, go ahead. Caller, go ahead. So, caller, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you, and if you would like to try to call back in and reestablish the line, you can do that. Caller, go ahead. Okay, caller, go ahead.
Yes, Councilman... Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize. I'm having technical difficulties. Richard Wagner, 408 South Main. I just wanted to call and respectfully disagree with Mr. Matthews' idea of taking the next... The person with the next highest number of votes, because I feel that it disenfranchises the majority of the votes that voted for the two members that were elected this go-around. Additionally, I'm glad to hear that we're opening the chambers for public because this call-in stuff is really difficult, and sometimes the time limit that you give is too short, and I'm unable, and I'm sure others are unable to get on the line before you close public comment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Real quick, unless we have another public comment, as a... Because we can clarify, right? So, as clarifying, it is we do not have... It's not even legally possible for us to take that option that Mr. Matthews suggested. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but I will defer to...
That's also my understanding. I just want to make sure we're stating it out in the open, so it's not a matter of contention.
If I may, Mr. Mayor Protown?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Pilchun.
I would just say that the council has the power to appoint whomever it wants. So, the procedure that the council is adopting about taking applications, that's purely voluntary on the council's part. So, if a majority of the council wanted to appoint someone who previously ran and lost, the council is free to do that.
Thank you, Lloyd. Answers that question?
That gets it right out there. Yeah, nice.
Okay, do we have any other callers? Okay, seeing no other callers, we'll bring it back to council for any final comments.
Nothing.
Mayor Bruin?
Nothing here. Glad to be here and moving forward.
Yes, sir. Okay, seeing no further comments. We have our direction, and we will now move on to committee reports. So, starting with Finance Committee. We did not meet. Infrastructure Committee?
Have not met yet.
Economic Development Committee?
We did meet on the 10th. Let me get into the microphone. We had two items to discuss...
We had two items to discuss, and one was something I asked our economic development staff to bring forward. That was a social media rebranding. It's still very much in the works, but basically, I gave a presentation on where I thought, suggestions from me on where I thought the city should go to change up our social media presence, and we all came to a consensus that we should move forward with a couple of suggestions. It's nothing radical, nothing crazy, and so that's being worked in, the rest of that's the details of being worked internally to the staff. And then the other discussion item was just staff reports, and there was quite a few things. Melissa's not here, but I can go over my notes real quick, if you want me around. The CD, CDVG grant, right? All tables and chairs are given out. I guess that also means those funds were expended, correct, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. EV charger grant, that's moving forward. Oasis is breaking ground at the end of March, possibly. That was what was, at least, I think, relayed to us, the city. They've signed a lease to Chipotle and Starbucks, and Panda is breaking ground, March, April timeframe. That's the extent of it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, Parks, Recreation and Quality of Life Committee?
We have not met since our last meeting. We have a meeting on the 27th at 1:00 PM at the former Pinnypool site to do walkthrough, and we are still collecting survey responses. Community participation is critical. Please join in the process. They're out on social media, and join us on the Saturday, the 27th at 1:00 PM.
Okay, very good. And so like Mayor Bruin said, public participation is very important, and so anybody listening out there currently, we recommend that you, you come to the meeting and, and spread the word, and let's try to get as many people out to that, that meeting next Saturday as we can, so, very good. Next is the Ridgecrest Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, RACBB.
Yes, sir, I have that. The only thing to report is, is that the RACBB will be here at the next council meeting to make a update presentation to council.
Okay, very good. Okay, so next we have other committees, boards, or commissions.
I have a Kern Cog Thursday, Kern Cog meeting, and then on the, on Friday, League of California Cities meeting. So following council meeting, I'll update you guys on what, what happened, what went on.
Very good. Any other committees, boards, or commission? Okay. Next, we have the City Managers Report.
Yes, sir. One item to report regarding the wastewater treatment facility. Some years back, or actually a couple of years ago, we reported that there were sledge piles at the wastewater facility on the installation that had been gathering there for 10-plus years. The city's been working for the last couple of years to be, to get rid of those piles with the work of Mr. Lauer and Jim at Wastewater. We got a contract through Waste Management, and happy to report those piles are being removed at this time. About half of them are gone, the rest should be gone next week. This was a, you know, significant amount of work trying to get, or find a way of properly disposing of this, this material. I don't think we reported last meeting, but the chamber sign is up and running by Walmart. If you haven't gone by, take a look at that. It looks really nice. The city does have the ability to post items on there involving us and nonprofits, so that is something, Mr. Blades, we can, we can use for, for marketing for the city if we choose to, and that's my report at this time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next, we have the future agenda items.
Nothing.
Okay, seeing none, next we have the mayor and council comments.
I'm good.
I'll go ahead and chime in first, that way everyone else can talk without my interruptions. Just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Hayman for running the meeting. I have no active comments, other than the Chamber of Commerce Economic Outlook Conference is next week. I hope to see many of you there. That's another great event for this community, and they'll be doing that virtually. Beyond that, I'm enjoying vacation, and I'm going to return to it as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mayor Bruin, and you are very welcome, and we, I hope you have a nice vacation, and turn off your phone and enjoy it, so... Any other mayor or council comments?
Just want to thank Rick for all her hard work with this process of selecting the, I know it is 10 years, so thanks for, what all you do for this process. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.